All right, we're going to call this September 22nd Board of Education meeting to order. Secretary Pisana, may we please have a roll call?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Grisemkowski.
Here.
Mr. Demick.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
I am present. Ms. Cotter.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here, thank you very much.
We have a form. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we need the approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion. Motion from Tom to approve the agenda as presented.
Yes.
Support?
I'll support.
And support from Ms. Ryan. Let's do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you very much. We'll go into items from the board president. I first want to start with, I can't remember where Mr. Wiseman used to read this, so I'll read it at the right at the top of the president's comments. Reminding everyone that agendas are back on the back wall along with citizen participation forms. As a school board, we appreciate the members of our community who share their public comments during the designated times in our meeting agenda. This is an important opportunity for the board to hear from the community. However, it's not a time for two-way communication. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is designed for the board to conduct a business of the Huron Valley Schools in an open session accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Comments that require follow-up investigation or communication will be handled by the superintendent or a member of the team. There are two segments in our agenda for public comment in sections three and seven respectively. Fifteen minutes has been allocated in section three for public comments related to action voting items or non-action items if time allows. The Board of Education will allocate more than fifteen minutes allocated in section three, so all public comments on action voting items may be heard in section three prior to the board voting on those items. All comments on non-action items will take place during section seven of the agenda if not already heard in section three. All speakers wishing to address the board must be present. All individuals will be given an opportunity to speak. Each individual delivering public comment will have three minutes to share their communication. Individuals may only speak once and cannot share unused times with other persons. A timer will be displayed on the screen so individuals can monitor their time. Once three minutes have elapsed, timer will sound indicating that public comment has concluded, and the microphone will be turned off in preparation for the next speaker. The individual must be present to share public comment. We ask that you share your name and home school district before sharing your comments. Furthermore, we request that you refrain from name-calling or mentioning the names of specific employees, persons, or students within your public comment. Comments must be related to school business and may not include personal attacks unrelated to school business. If you make such comments, the Board of Education president will, to the extent permitted by the First Amendment, interrupt or end your comment time. If you plan to share public comments, please complete the comment form again in the back of the room and give your form to Ms. Caddell, who sits right there next to Mr. Van Gotham. Thank you for your professionalism and partnership. So with that, I'll go into other presidents' comments. Tonight on the agenda, you will see that we are ratifying the remaining contracts for our employees. And I want to just again give a thanks to everyone who participated in this. I know it has been months and months of hard work and dedication and good conversations. We come together to discuss and try to figure out the best way forward for everyone. We're proud that many of our employees live in our community and that we employ almost all of them directly here with HVS. So we appreciate the work. We appreciate the folks who gave their time to do this, and we look forward to hearing about these last few items this evening. I don't know why I have, oh, yes. So we had our first meeting of the Student Support Services Ad-Hoc Committee a few weeks ago. You'll hear a report out about that in the committee section. We are forming a strategic plan committee for that group, and we look forward to that work this year. Thank you again for coming on board and starting this right away so we can do a good job focusing on student support services this year. I am asking all of the board committee chairs in their next agenda or the next agenda where appropriate to have a discussion section where you brainstorm about board goals. So everybody who works for us sets goals. In the past, we've set goals, and I think it's time for us looking at the strategic plan and looking at our board work to determine a couple of goals that might make sense for us as a board to work on over the next year. And then we will have a board study session sometime later in the fall where we can then bring all those ideas to the group, discuss, and then adopt some goals to move forward for the year. Finally, I want to share a thank you to our community. We have two members of the HVS family who have had some tragedy over the last month with a fire, a home fire, and the community has come together to do a lot of friend raising and support for these staff members of ours. There's, the tragedy that came is really hard to get your head around, losing just about everything to a fire. So it's nice to see that we're in a community that is supportive of these members of our HVS family. So thank you to those folks who have contributed. I know our transportation department continues to collect for this family. If there are people who are interested, by all means, reach out to the transportation department. That concludes my comments for the evening, and I will move it on down to recognition.
Thank you, Madam President. We do not have any recognitions this evening, but we do have a school presentation. So if you'd like, I can go right into the school presentation. Okay, this evening, this evening, we have with us the proud principal of the International Academy West, who is going to be facilitating a presentation on collaborative sciences project. And so, Mr. Parrott, I'll let you roll from here.
All right, thank you. I also have a student with me, Asher Tyner, who is also one of the tech interns here for us, our media interns. So they will be coming up and talking with us also. Unfortunately, it appears that our biology teacher, who was going to join us, is unable to join us this evening. And so, one thing we wanted to bring to the board was talk a little bit about our program and what makes the IA as a small school within Huron Valley, some of those unique experiences that our students are able to live through and have. As our graduation, you know, generally, we have about less than a hundred students per graduating class. We are able to take that opportunity to really do some experiences that get all of the students together at one time. And so, one of the IB requirements is that we do a collaborative science experiment, meaning that a student from each physics, biology, and chemistry get together, and they do an experiment at one time together and really look at how the different sciences communicate. It's a real low-risk experiment. We're not asking them to go really in-depth in any one thing, but help teach each other and show how the different subject areas really do cross and how that these truly are interdisciplinary connections between these different core science areas. And so, they're working together on a real-world problem, allowing students to apply their knowledge from across these sciences. And so, how do we do this? We do a science investigation. Really, we give the students a set of tools. We have these groups ahead of time, and we say, "Look, we're in this great environment of Michigan and have all these different ecosystems, all these different areas that we can explore, and we want you to go out with a small set of tools and discover your own findings." We do this on a trip. We decide because we are that small opportunity, all of our students were able to attend a three-day camp at Camp Tamarack. And so, many of the students have been there for fifth-grade camps or other previous experiences. And so, we went to Camp Tamarack, spent three days, where one of those days was truly dedicated to the data collection and presentations through Google Slides. This is along with staff members, our complete science team, and then a couple other of our staff members and myself are able to make it out there for at least a portion of the time for that event. So again, in groups of four to five students designed to investigate using their box of science, then they create a Google Slide presentation, show of what was learned over their course of their two days. And so, here we have some pond water analysis, forest catapult, where they designed and built something right in the forest and took all the data, looking at lily pad surface area. And I'm actually going to have Asher come up and talk a little bit about what they did.
Hello, I'm Asher, and I'm a senior that went to this Group Four Collaborative Sciences project. And as you can see, I'm in the surface, the lily pad surface area image on the board. And what my group did is that we knew we wanted to do something involving water because we were right by a beautiful lake while we were at Camp Tamarack. And when we looked out of the cafeteria window and we saw all of these amazing lily pads, we all came to the conclusion that we needed to do something involving lily pads. So we wanted to design and an experiment that would help us model the relationship between surface area and how much weight a lily pad could hold. And while we were successfully able to find and model this relationship, we were also able to find other factors that involved like how much weight a lily pad could hold, including like vein pattern and how close the shape was to a circle. So not only did we prove our hypothesis, but we also learned so many other things on the way. And we honestly learned mostly about how to work together as a team with all members of my group coming from different sciences, mine from the Environmental Systems and Society Science class. So overall, it was a very fun trip, and I would definitely do it again if I was given the chance. And I had a great time, and I hope that every senior that comes to IA gets the opportunity to do this as well. Thank you.
So again, it's a three-day trip, so not all is science and working together is teamwork. We also have fun. So there was a lot of card playing, a lot of just having conversations, bonfires where our teachers were making marshmallows for the staff or for the students. And then we do have a water time where many students were out kayaking, swimming. It happens to be beautiful weather in September still. So we are very fortunate this year that the students were really using the water. There were football, there was ultimate frisbee, there was many different games that were going on and having fun together in that camp environment, which really, it's rare that you get a high school that's able to do that in that experience. But being as small as we are, like I said, gives us that opportunity. Additionally, as a sophomore level grade, all of our students learned to rappel and work through teamwork. And so, at the different events, they have a team-building event, high ropes course. And so, our students are able to do that. And Asher, you want to talk a little bit about the Tango Tower and House?
So half of the day is spent on Saturday collecting data for our experiments, and the other half, we get to go to a ropes course called Tango Tower. And it is basically a giant tower that has five different elements or, I guess, obstacles. You could call them that we are able to rappel up and climb up, kind of like a ropes course, like tree runner, you could say. And there is also a giant swing that swings you at thirty miles an hour through the forest. And honestly, it is so cool because we are able to, as a class, help belay each other up and make sure that we have that trust in each other to be able to perform these activities together. And we all had so much fun going up these obstacles and these, and the swing, honestly, the swing was very fun. But yeah, it was so cool to be able to help belay each other up and keep each other afloat as we're all having a good time there, so.
And we do have a video of that swing, which we are proud to say, I think, from those previous experiences, all our students went to the highest level and did this swing. But if you heard there, they're making the calls. It's actually the rest of their classmates in that bottom left that are lifting them up to that height. They are the ones doing the belaying. They are the ones doing all of the spotting for their team members. And so, it really is just that bonding and that teamwork that we like to focus on within our program. And so, this is another culminating event for our seniors that they get to do that. And so, again, this is our class of 2026. There's a photo of them at camp. And our overnight sponsors that were there, I also attended in Miss Grove, but not overnight. I think they're often ready to be without their principal overnight, but with their staff members that are very skilled and being mentors for them overnight. And so, just wanted to talk a little bit about our program and some of the things that we're able to do thanks to the board and some of the trips that we're able to take.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have questions? Of course, Mr. Wiseman has a question. Bring it on.
Well, I don't have a question. First of all, I want to say thank you. And I've done low ropes, but I've never done high ropes, and I don't think I'm going to either, based on what I just saw. But this was really an opportunity, Ryan, for you to kind of pound your chest a little bit about how proud we are. We do have four high schools. The IA, IA is one of them. You talk about the IA, and we get into acronyms all the time. Maybe you could talk a little bit about what IAW stands for? What we're part of, because we are a partnership, and how students might become interested in the IA West.
Yeah, of course. So the International Academy is one school with three different buildings. We have a building in Bloomfield Hills, Troy, and then Huron Valley within the Lakeland campus. We are a partnership of about ten different local school districts that are working together to provide this opportunity for their students. International Academy West is that building that's housed within our Huron Valley Schools. Huron Valley Schools is one of the largest center of students to all of the International Academy, and so we are very proud. I am a Huron Valley employee, and I'm very proud to be a Huron Valley employee and working within the district. Students can apply through Huron Valleys or through School of Choice, but also at our West campus, we also have South Lion students. So it is a cooperative between Huron Valley and South Lion with here at Schools of Choice coming into Huron Valley Schools. We are a small program in that it's focused all together on the International Baccalaureate Program for the diploma program in the eleventh and twelfth grade and the middle years program in the ninth and tenth grade. And really, that's looking at making sure there's those connections across all of the subject areas that are really making sure that they're focused on showing that students are learning different material and becoming ownerships of that material through the same type of lens and the same language and the same way of learning through the different areas. It is an all honors program, but we're not expecting students to be at the top of the class when they're coming in. We're really looking to support students as they're coming into the program, keeping them going through and working together. Because our students are kind of tracked through this program together, it is incredibly highly collaborative environment because they're with a group of a hundred kids over four years. You know, each grade level is about a hundred students, and so they really get connections. They know how to support each other. If one student is struggling in math but is strong in French, those two students can work together and support each other in those different subject areas. And so, it really is a great opportunity for students to expand their own knowledge in areas they may not feel strong in but want to continue to explore and continue to go forth. And we really are focused on experiential learning, really looking at ways that they can become the historian, ways they can become the science practitioner. Really, in our junior and senior level classes, their largest assignments are without direction. It is simply do a historical study of a topic of choice. Do a science experiment and explore it within your core science area of your choice. And so, there's a lot of that freedom of pathways of finding things they're interested in and really diving deeper and exploring deeper in. You know, I'm going to put Asher on the spot again. Asher, do you mind? We have one thing, for instance, is our extended essay. It's an essay that students are writing at a collegiate level, but really of their own, any subject area and any topic. So Asher, do you want to talk about what your extended essay was?
So in our junior year, we are all required to write a roughly four thousand-word essay that is centered around a subject of our choosing in a class that we take. And last year, I was not an Environmental Systems and Society student. However, I was able to teach myself the basics of the program and write an essay, a four thousand-word essay on the patterns of birds in North America. And I specifically studied five birds and how environmental urbanization has affected their wingspan and colors and migratory patterns. And I was able to effectively investigate this over the course of about four or five months where we were drafting out this essay. And I, we all have our own teacher advisors. My teacher advisor was our biology and environmental sciences and societies teacher, Mr. Jones. And honestly, it was such an amazing experience to be able to write an essay or write a paper at this caliber in, still in high school. And we're all able to get that experience of what colleges and university might be like writing these papers for. And it was great, it was a great time management activity, I will say that. I had to do a lot of planning beforehand to be able to get my things in on the deadlines that they were required. But overall, I had just an amazing time being able to investigate something I was truly interested in, in a school sense. So I love birds, and I was finally able to get to express my love for them in a paper like this. So it was a fabulous program.
And usually, we don't like to talk about papers being a highlight of a student experience, but again, this is built within a class period. And so, this is time that is carved out within their day that they are able to explore these topics. And really thankful to our experienced teachers that are able to balance twenty-some essays at a given time within their classroom, twenty, thirty essays, and be able to help guide them along those pathways. And so, you know, I think if anyone is interested in the program, please see the website both on huronvalley.org or hvs.org or at ia today.org. We will be having open nights in November and in January for enrollment, and that information will be posted on the website shortly. But really, any eighth-grade family that's interested can also just email me, you know, ryan.parratt@hvs.org, and I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding that. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Cotter.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I know how important it was when I went to fifth grade, when we took fifth graders to camp, the same camp, by the way. I'm sure that your seniors had just as good a time. your seniors had just as good a time. And thanks for the photos. It was very nice to see the activities that were available there. They're gonna remember that forever.
Yeah, it definitely is one of the highlights of our senior class. Whenever we do our exit seminar, or exit surveys, this is always identified as one of those events that they had the most fun on, but also that there was a learning experience.
All right. Thank you so much. We really appreciated it. All right, moving to our next item, which is superintendent communication. Dr. Slaugh?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I would just say thank you to Mr. Parrot for being here. We appreciate the presentation. One of the things we're very proud of as a school district is we pride ourselves on being a triple-A district, which means we have a heavy focus on the academics, the arts, and the athletics. And the International Academy is one of four of our high schools. And what I'm extraordinarily proud about is that regardless of what a student wants to do with their life, there literally is not an, there is, there is not an option for them to not be able to take advantage of opportunities that we have either here or within Oakland County through OSTC, our career tech ed programming. I mean, truly, whether you're interested in the International Baccalaureate curriculum, you're interested in one of our traditional high schools, you need an alternative path through Harbor, or you're interested in one of those skilled trades, you have every one of those options available to you. And it's just fantastic to be able to offer that to our students. So, thank you, Mr. Parrot, for highlighting one of our high schools and one pathway in terms of opportunities we offer to our students. So, we are, believe it or not, this is week four into the school year. We have not had a board meeting since the school year kicked off. The last board meeting we had was, I believe, like the second week of August. So, a lot has transpired over the course of the last six weeks. To our students, welcome back. We're glad that you are here. I want to just give a special thank you to all of our staff for launching the beginning of the school year in a successful, safe manner. So, welcome back to everyone. We are hundred percent in the game. We're in the throes. My first item under Superintendent Communications this evening is I have the honor and the privilege to introduce our new principal at Spring Mills Elementary School, Mr. Adam Wager. And I think that that is his son with him, right? Wave to everyone. Mr. Wager comes to us with a, with a bachelor's degree from Grand Valley State University in elementary education and social studies. He has a master's degree from Mary Grove College in a master in arts education, and then he also has his administrative certificate, which he just earned in 2025. He has extensive experience ranging from an elementary teacher at Dykesire Elementary School in Sterling Heights, elementary teacher at our very own Johnson Elementary School, social studies teacher at White Lake Middle School, and most recently PBIS Coordinator and Behavior Support at White Lake Middle School. Mr. Wager also, most recently, completed a professional learning opportunity that we offer here at Huron Valley called the Galileo Leadership Consortium. It's a two-year commitment to professional learning that teachers, teachers can embark upon. We have only a few teachers that actually do this professional learning every couple of years because it's a two-year cohort. And it's highly competitive, and it's, it takes a lot of time, and it's a lot of really positive learning for the individual that participates. And Mr. Wager participated in that program, I think, two years ago, right, Adam? Yeah, two years ago. And I remember sitting with Adam, because as part of the process, he gets to sort of at the end of the year, share his culminating activity. And John and I met with Adam and his, and another one of his colleagues, Debbie Talan, who was also a Galileo leader. And he walked us through his, his, one of his project, which was the Peer Showcase Program to foster collaboration among teachers. And he has led several professional learning experiences for many of our staff in positive behavior intervention and support. So, we are so fortunate to welcome Adam to the Spring Mills team and to serve as our Spring Mills principal. Please join me in congratulating Adam, giving him a round of applause, and then, Adam, please feel free to come to the podium and share a couple thoughts.
Oh, there you go. It's a push button. Okay, perfect. I'm gonna sheet and use my phone for a couple of notes here. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to come and speak to you and to be part of this whole process. It's really great. So, six years ago, my wife Natalie, who's a Huron Valley educator, she's been in the district since 2010, when I was over in Sterling Heights and Utica, we had a choice to make. And the choice was really, where were we going to kind of put down our roots and where are we going to continue as a family, you know, for our kids and also for myself professionally, then for her as well. And after a little bit of back and forth, the decision was clear. Huron Valley was the place for us to be as a family, and then again, for us, you know, as educators ourselves. So, in the end, it was actually a really easy decision. As hard as it was, it was hard, but it was also very simple at the same time. Since being here at Huron Valley, my kids have had a great experience. My son here is actually, he's making the rounds. He's been at four of the elementary schools now. He's a pro. He went to junior kindergarten at Highland, had a great teacher, Mr. K., spent two years at Johnson with myself, and then at Lakewood, and then now he followed me to Spring Mills. You know, such a great place to be. I definitely want him to be part of that experience as well. And my daughter also, also at Johnson, at Lakewood, and then at White Lake Middle School, having a great sixth-grade year. Professionally, myself, you know, Paul said some great things. Thank you for those kind words. I've had some great opportunities since being here in Huron Valley. Galileo was a once-in-a-lifetime experience professionally, got to meet some great colleagues, some great leaders that are in our district and in other districts as well. It was a fantastic experience. Also, since being in Huron Valley the last five, six years, I think one of the most valuable things that it's really come across for me has been working with outstanding leaders, mentors and colleagues, name a few. Josh Janack has been a wonderful mentor, friend of mine throughout my time here. Dr. Peruski, Nick Peruski, Michelle Chakaski at White Lake Middle School, phenomenal mentors, leaders that I feel like I've really been able to kind of model. What I'm trying to do at Spring Mills off of, you know, their experiences, what I've learned from them. Also, Debbie Talan, who you also mentioned, a great friend of mine, colleague, doing amazing things here in the school district, which I think we can all learn from. And also, my current mentor, Trish Campbell, over at Highland Elementary. I feel, since I've been here, so supported, really given some great opportunities to do my best for our community here. Overall, I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm truly honored to be entrusted with leading at Spring Mills. It's an amazing building, amazing staff, great students, great families. I'm excited for it, and I'm gonna put my all into leading, you know, with empathy, compassion, and integrity. So, here's to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wager. And I know that your elementary age son is here with you. So, if you need to head out this evening, please do not feel like you have to stay through the entire meeting. You could stay, you can listen to the state budget presentation if you'd like, but yeah, that's kind of what I thought. I think he actually walked quicker as he was, as he was exiting. So, we're excited to have Mr. Wager on board. He really is, he's gonna be wonderful for Spring Mills, and he's already doing a fantastic job over there. State budget. So, last week, President Dodd and I had an opportunity to send a communication to, out to the community regarding the current status of the state budget. We did not mention that the federal budget is also at odds. We could actually have no state budget or federal budget on October 1. So, we could be facing state government shutdown as well as federal government shutdown. Hopefully, that does not happen. But there's a lot happening on the political front, to say the least. It does feel like that our state legislature is making some progress. So, I will, I will say, it does feel like some of the big, big-ticket items, there seem to be, they seem to be getting on the same page around and corralling around. However, there still are some, some key items that remain undone. And so, that's, that's literally all I know at this point. As we sit here, I'm hearing these sort of broad brushstrokes in terms of where we are at, in terms of completion of the budget. I will tell you what remains unclear is whether or not school aid fund money, which is used to fund our schools, will be siphoned off to pay for roads. That, that is a major, that is a major focus for the governor. That has, that was, you know, one of the key items that she ran on was fixing the roads. And I know it is a major focus of our, of our house as well. So, there is a, there is a desire to do something as it relates to roads. I don't know exactly what that means, but I do know that the general fund has a, has a overall decline, whereas the school aid fund has a overall increase. And so, if they're going to take it from anywhere, it could very well come from the dollars that we use to educate students. The other, the other key thing I would mention relates to the House budget. So, the House budget, you know, one of the talking points I've heard come from House leaders is that I don't, you know, I don't know why schools are upset with the House budget. It's a $2,500 increase. Well, for our listening audience, here's what's important to know. Yes, it is a $2,500 increase, which is, which is fantastic, but it's also a net reduction overall because it eliminates the safety and security categorical, it eliminates the transportation categorical, it eliminates some at-risk monies. And it, it really takes a lot of these categoricals and kind of just rolls them into the general fund, which looks like on paper, an increase to the per pupil foundation allowance. But in net difference in terms of what actually is sent to the district, it's actually flat or a decrease. So, it's just important for, for us to know when we're talking about these different budgets, that, that sometimes, you know, the details are really important, and we need to pay attention to those, those facts when we're, when we're making decisions. And I guess my biggest concern at this point is whenever we wait until the last minute to adopt a budget, it's really difficult for legislators to read the budget in its entirety. Budget, budgets are typically hundreds of pages long. And so, there might be one line that is a million-dollar cut or a $5-million cut. And because the legislature is now under so much pressure to adopt a budget, you know, I'm concerned that policymakers are just going to vote to approve or disapprove a budget without actually reading it. And so that does have an impact on us because we really won't know what the final budget looks like until after it's a done deal. And then we go right through this process again because they're gonna have to fix mistakes that are made, and we'll have to look for a supplemental budget, and then we'll have to lobby for those things. And it's just, it's just unnecessary. And, you know, it's unfortunate. So, that's where we're at in terms of the state of the budget. If you have not had an opportunity to contact your legislators, please do so, whether it be our local representatives, our local senator, or the governor's office. My final item this evening, I just wanted to spend a quick moment. You heard Madam President Dodd speak to this. You will hear Ms. Grizmkowski speak to this as well. But we did have our first ad hoc meeting for the Student Support Services Strategic Plan. It's really exciting to see the work as it relates to our Student Support Services Department come to fruition. Last year, the board approved a goal for me to do a deep dive and examination of our Student Support Services operation. We hired a third-party organization, Empower Ed Solutions, to come in and collect a lot of data, look at the legal aspects of our operation, talk with staff, and as well as administer surveys. And through, through that process, through that goal that was adopted by the board, we were able to identify some of the key items that needed some, some renovation, if you will, as a local school district. And one of the commitments that we made early on through that process was that a, once, once we were able to restructure in a way that would set us up for the greatest success, that we would go through a rigorous strategic planning process. And I'm really excited. We are making progress. I, we are going to be sending out some invitations here shortly. We have identified about forty participants to participate in that work. It involves many key stakeholders, including community members and parents and teachers and administrators, a couple of students as well. Todd and I had an opportunity to meet with Empower Ed Solutions to talk about them helping us to facilitate the strategic plan work. And it was interesting. We were talking through what that committee might look like. And they were talking about the number of participants as like twelve people. And I was, I told Todd, I said, there's a right way, there's a wrong way, and there's a Huron Valley way. And the Huron Valley way is we do forty. We have a lot of people involved in our strategic planning work because we don't want there to be any questions about the decisions that are made, about the transparency, and about the steps towards helping us to move forward as, as an organization. So, really excited about that strategic plan work. All seven board members are invited and encouraged to attend any and all of those meetings. We, we want you to be able to hear those conversations, to offer your own voices to the, to the process. We feel that there is power in, in your voices as a part of that conversation as well. So, with that, that concludes my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, student leadership. It looks like we have our first student of the year, which is wonderful. Ms. Pistana, do you want to introduce Landon, or do you want me to?
Either, you can go ahead. Landon, thanks for coming. Landon represents Lakeland, and I didn't know you were gonna be here tonight, so say whatever you want to say, Landon.
I'm ready. I'm ready.
All right.
I have some notes. All right, so my name is Landon Johns. I'm the student body president at Lakeland High School. I'm gonna talk a little bit about how the school year has gone this week and the future of Lakeland this year. So, this week is homecoming week for Lakeland. It's really exciting. We're all very excited about this. The theme this year is Great Gatsby or The Roaring Twenties. It's kind of a new one. We've never done this before. We actually had a very successful movie night last night where we played The Great Gatsby on the Oxygen Auditorium, and it was great. A lot of students got to watch the movie and was acclimated to the theme. We, Miss View, would like me to invite all of you guys to all of the activities this week that Lakeland offers. We have our homecoming game, our homecoming pep assembly on Friday, our homecoming parade. And I believe there is a homecoming White Lake Middle School Assembly on Thursday. I think it's Thursday. It might be Wednesday. I don't know. Now, for something, there, I don't know if this is an admin rule or a, like an HVS rule or a Lakeland admin rule, but since the backpack rule has been in place three years ago, a lot of, especially the girls in our school have gotten tote bags, really large tote bags. And the reason why we got rid of backpacks is to clear the hallways. So, Lakeland has, and I don't know if this is HVS, but Lakeland has made a rule now where we are prohibiting those large tote, tote bags because they are blocking the aisle. There's been a little pushback, but everyone's getting acclimated. This is a new policy next week that we are in place, that we are placing. We are working with the student body at Lakeland, and the student leadership is working with the PTSA on certain activities. We're doing, we're trying to bring Mr. Lakeland into our school. Milford has it, we don't have it, so we're gonna try to do that this year. That's gonna be February. Then we are possibly, this is a poss, big possibly, we're possibly gonna do a Haunted Forest either the week before Halloween, so that's Saturday we're looking at, kind of to add another huge event for us at Lakeland. And then, we are also going to continue the student and staff basketball game, which, if I remember correctly, Dr. Slaugh balled out that one. He was, he got intense. I liked it. A lot of the student body loved it last year. So, we're excited for that one as well, and it's a good moneymaker for the PTSA. Sports is underway at Lakeland. You know, we have had our football games. Everything's gone smoothly so far. We actually just had a, today, our new trainer come into the facilities because we ended up breaking with ATI. up breaking with ATI. So, our new trainer was on the site today, and it was great. She was, she's amazing. We actually have our Powder Puff game tonight, so I'm going to go to that after this. So, we're excited for that, too. As you guys know, we added a special education program in classrooms here at Lakeland. That has gone great. Our students and staff have treated them amazing. It's been really cool to see them as well, and I've had the privilege to lead a few of those kids with link leadership. And yeah, it's been great with that as well. I think that's it for me. That was a lot, but...
Thank you, Landon. Landon, can you remind us what time is the homecoming parade?
Yeah, so it's five-ish, or it might be six. It's somewhere around 5:50 or, I think it's 5:45.
5:45.
5:45, sorry about that.
All right, and who are you playing in the homecoming game? Does anybody know?
We were playing Kettering, Waterford Kettering. So, it's going to be fun. It's going to be very fun.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and we do not have association communication tonight, so we'll move on to next, board correspondence. Do we have anything?
No, not tonight.
All right, treasurer's report.
Just very briefly, I just want to call out Mr. Van Gothen and Heather's team. We aren't going to be getting our audit report until later on, but I do know through conversations that the audit is done, that is through the auditing firm that the Board of Education hires. It's an independent audit of our finances for the previous year, '24, '25. And I will say that, once again, they did a fine job. It's not something that just happens over the last couple of weeks, it's something that occurs throughout the year. I think it's indicative of the transparency and the professionalism that our district holds as it relates to being responsible for over a million, over $100 million worth of taxpayers' dollars. And I will say that the audit came out very, very well, and very anxious for our representatives that we hire from our independent CPA firm to give us a report. So, I just want to say thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Now, moving on to reports from board committees. I get to start this one with notes from the executive committee. Executive Committee met on September 11th at 9:00 a.m. in the admin building. Present were myself, Mr. Wiseman, Ms. Cotter, Dr. Slaugh, Ms. Wanger, and Ms. Rothler. We had no public comments. Regular agenda, the first thing on our agenda was the September 22 regular board meeting agenda. We reviewed the agenda in anticipation for tonight's meeting. Next, we reviewed a draft of the superintendent's goals. Dr. Slaugh reviewed with the committee his '25, '26 superintendent goals presentation. The committee discussed these goals in anticipation of tonight's meeting. Next, we had a discussion about the future of establishing board goals as well as study session dates and topics. It was agreed that Dr. Slaugh would work with Ms. Caddell to identify some possible dates that can be shared with board members in order to determine the best possibility. So, if any of you like me have not done that yet, please get to it. Next, we discussed the state budget. The committee reviewed, the committee reviewed the communication regarding the state budget and discussed some minor review. Legislative advocacy updates. I provided an update regarding the Oakland County School Board Association Government Relations Committee meeting. The predominant focus was upon the state budget. Next, Huron Valley Promise. Ms. Rothler provided some updates regarding the district partnership with Huron Valley State Bank and the Huron Valley Promise. More to come on that within the next few months, I think. Next, we discussed some vacant land on Watkins Avenue, which is the street just outside leading into Milford High School. Dr. Slaugh shared some information regarding the vacant land across from the admin building going up for sale, and some of the renderings provided by KJ Commercial Real Estate Advisors for Residential Advisor. The committee discussed the implications of this land being developed for residential purposes. Next, we talked about school safety and security. Committee discussed the recent passage of safe gun storage laws that Michigan adopted and discussed the legal obligations to share information with the community. Ms. Rothler shared the steps she had taken to ensure our compliance with the law. Finally, we discussed tentative agreements. Ms. Wanger presented the tentative agreement for HVFT, HVACA, and HVSSP. Don't worry, we'll get into what those acronyms mean in a few minutes, which will be brought to the board for approval at tonight's meeting. We didn't have any other, and we adjourned at 11:00 a.m. Next meeting is September 25th at 9:00 a.m. at the administration building. Next committee report is TLT.
TLT met on August 27th at the administration building. The meeting was called to order at 9:03. Present were myself, Ms. Cotter, Ms. Grizimkowski, Dr. Nemeth, Dr. Slaugh, Mr. Endicott, Mr. Lindberg, Ms. Bjorkman, Mr. Columbach, and Ms. Horwitz. No one was absent, and there was no public comment. For unfinished business, we talked about Renescent EduClimber. Dr. Nemeth shared a presentation at the last committee meeting on EduClimber. She will present the proposal to the board tonight. This tool will provide valuable support for the MTSS team by giving quick access to data for timely intervention. The MTSS team will begin its work in October, and this tool will be a great addition to support their goals. Under new business, we talked about the K-5 ELA updates. Mrs. Tallon gave an update on the ELA's committee work. Last year, the committee focused on evaluation and planning. This year's focus will be to revise and develop a plan for full K-5 implementation for next year. After researching and investigating highly rated curriculum and feedback from other districts in Michigan, the team voted to pilot HMH into reading and amplify CKLA. The state approved the use of Section 35M grant funds for these pilots, and HVS was awarded $712,676. Pilots will run September 2025 to February 2026, with the final selection being in February. All K through 5 teachers will be trained on the selected resources in spring or early fall of 2026. Under Student Support Services, Mr. Columbach shared that he and Ms. Franzah met with the Student Support Services team this week to discuss goals for the year. These include setting up a self-assessment with Oakland Schools, creating a strategic plan, and forming the ad hoc special ed committee. The ad hoc committee will include parents, teachers, and staff to collaboratively work through the recommendations from Empowered Solutions. Mr. Columbach noted that the Student Support Services team is already building strong momentum thanks to the dedicated staff that's currently in place. Mr. Lindberg shared an administrative website that he created to organize relevant information for administrators. It includes the professional learning calendar. This year, he created separate professional learning calendars for elementary as well as secondary. And this site also links to agendas, an overview of each PL day, and a teacher-facing document to be shared at the building level. There was no strategic plan update. Under safety and security update, Dr. Slaugh informed the committee that the four Huron Valley school buildings were dealing with mold. The district had responded with extra cleaning, fans, and industrial dehumidifiers. Nova Environmental tested the mold and confirmed it is not black mold, and that the indoor levels are lower than the outdoor mold levels. The recommendation was continued cleaning and humidity control. Follow-up testing will be done for reassurance, and the district will keep monitoring. School was expected to start on time, but delays or cancellations would remain possible if conditions change. That didn't happen. We didn't have any student leadership at that meeting. Our other items is Dr. Nemeth plans to discuss district-wide cell phone use at an upcoming meeting. HVS teachers are seeking clear guidelines for classroom use, and the district aims to establish a unified stance. She would like principals, students, and TLT to be involved in the decision-making process. The other item was Dr. Slaugh shared the data slides and goals that were presented to teachers at opening day. We emphasized the impact of poverty on achievement, noting that ELA and math performance is currently on the lower end compared to similar districts. In response, he wants to identify individual students for targeted interventions and additional support, and will closely track their progress. The list of students needing support will be ready for the First Data Coach meeting on September 11th. We adjourned at 10:27, and our next meeting is Wednesday, September 24th at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you very much. Finance and Operations.
Yes, Finance and Operations met on Wednesday, September 17th, 2025, at 4:15 at the administrative offices, in attendance were myself, along with Ms. Cotter, Mr. Demick, Mr. Van Gothen, Heather Carrigan, Gina Moore, Tyler Maxwell, and Mike Miller from Clark Construction, and Bill Weinrock from TMP Architects. There were no public comments. We reviewed the minutes from the previous meeting, which was held on August 11th. The meetings were, the meeting minutes were included in the notes to the board on 9/19/2025. We reviewed the regular agenda, along with consent agenda item you see before us, and I don't want to be a downer because we've had nice weather, but we did have a long conversation about road salt purchases for '25, '26, and you have that in front of you. Unfinished business was the athletic trainer service contract. The committee reviewed the athletic trainer service RFP. We're asking the board to approve the contract that was presented to them at the previous board meeting with Plymouth Physical Therapy for Lakeland High School at a cost of $58,999 with 92 cents annually, and team rehabilitation for Milford High School at a cost of $54,999.96 annually. This is an annual allocation from the district of $113,998.88. The administration will seek approval. It's our understanding, while this is a three-year contract, we have the right to cancel these contracts with 90-day notification. New business, there were two emergency purchases. The Spring Mills chiller compressor replacement, along with the Oxbow emergency purchase for also a chiller compressor replacement. We had a long conversation as it related to that and the failure of the compressors as it related to the chillers that were purchased back in 2019 or with funding from the 2019 bond issue. We had conversations about the life expectancy of those chillers, and we were assured by Mr. Van Gothen that his maintenance team were also going to have some further conversations with the companies. As it related to the failures of those compressors that were necessary for us to have the proper environment for our students for the beginning of the school year, which necessitated that emergency purchase, we're going to have those conversations with the company as we're moving forward with replacement of chillers. And not only replacement of chillers at other buildings, but new chillers put on to our new middle school to assure that we have the proper equipment. Other items were the tentative agreements that we talked about, and there were no safety and security updates. Other items that were talked about or discussed was the bond issue construction update. Mr. Miller and Mr. Maxwell from Clark Construction provided the committee with remaining contingencies for all the current bid packs, along with construction progress report, photos, and upcoming bid packets. Administration building relocation update, the plumbing should be wrapped up by the end of this week, and masonry by the end of the month. Clark Construction has extended an open invitation to board members to visit that site at any time. Middle school schematic designs, Mr. Weinrock, who is our architect from TMP, shared the new middle school schematic designs. White Lake Middle School bid will go out in November with plans to break ground in April, and the foundation for additions to be in mid-June when school is out. Mr. Van Gothen and his staff also shared with us a year-to-date budget to actual. There were no further discussion items, and our meeting was adjourned at 5:45. Our next meeting will be October 1st, 2025 at 4:15.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wiseman. And next, the ad hoc Student Support Services Committee. We should probably change that in the agenda. Thank you.
Yes, we had our inaugural meeting, September 9th at 2:30 at the administration building. We called the order, I should say, we called the meeting to order at 2:30. Present were Mr. Columbach, Ms. Pistana, Ms. Dodd, Dr. Nemeth, myself, and Dr. Slaugh. We did not have any public comment. We have our regular agenda items. We started with the strategic plan design and implementation. We talked about the listening tour that the Student Support Service Department has launched to gather input from staff and families and principals. These visits will be completed by December and are designed to ensure that all voices are heard in shaping the themes and priorities of the Student Services strategic plan. In addition, we talked about the Oakland Schools self-assessment. Oakland Schools will lead a self-assessment of our Student Services Department this fall under the leadership of Oakland Schools. This will help identify strengths and areas of growth within student support, and this data will be used to drive the strategic plan priority areas. In addition, we talked about strategic plan committee members. As we're forming the strategic plan, we want to include administrators, general, and special ed staff, parents, and community members. The group will meet monthly from October through April, excluding December, and the goal is to focus on the data gathered from the priorities discovered in our development of our strategic plan. Student Support Services will send out invitations to all selected committee members this coming week. Review of Empower Ed Solutions recommendations and facilitation. As part of this process, we reviewed the eight recommendations from Empower Ed Solutions. Those are the folks that conducted last year's special education audit. These recommendations include monitoring caseloads, refining replacement processes, and addressing programs, program relocation such as ASD at White Lake Middle School and ATS at Oak Valley Campus. Each of these steps is designed to strengthen program quality, ensure compliance, and guide our long-term planning. Empower Ed Solutions will also serve as the facilitators for our strategic plan meetings throughout the process. We adjourned, not really sure what time we adjourned, but we adjourned about 3:30, 3:45. But our next meeting is December 2nd at 2:30.
Thank you very much. This moves us into public comment. We do have a few public comment forms tonight. None of them based specifically on business we're voting on tonight, but, so we'll move the ones that are based on other topics up to this section, so they can participate in public comment now. I will remind everyone that participants have three minutes to present their communication. What else do I want to remind you of? And if, for some reason, anyone else wants to participate, there's still time. You can grab a form in the back of the room and turn it in to Ms. Caddell. And with that, we will start with Lola Beer.
Good evening. My name is Lola Beer, and I am a senior at Milford High School. I am here tonight to speak to you about a problem that I have been having since last spring involving dual enrollment. Dual enrollment allows high school students who have met a certain criteria to take eligible classes at a Michigan college or university. My issue begins with not being told about dual enrollment until the end of my junior year. Michigan school districts are required by the Post-Secondary Enrollment Options Act to send out a letter every year by March 1st to families of students in grades 8 and higher telling them about the option of dual enrollment. My family and no other family in this district has ever received this letter. Last spring, my dad met with the dual enrollment coordinator for the Michigan Department of Education, Jeff McNeil, along with Marty Lindberg, and HVS was told they have to send this letter out to families, but they still haven't done so. This gives the impression that HVS is trying to hide the opportunity for students to be dual-enrolled and earn college credit while in high school. It also contradicts Board Policy 2112 Part B in regards to effective communication, which states the district will provide information to families about school policies, procedures, programs, and activities. Furthermore, half of the classes I have tried to sign up for have been denied. The laws under the Post-Secondary Enrollment Options Act clearly define what an eligible course is. In part, it states an eligible course is a course not taught at the high school. My request to take trigonometry was denied, which is a course not taught at the high school. My request to take Writing Composition 2 was denied, which is a course not taught at the high school. My request to take Interpersonal Communications was originally denied despite students at Lakeland being allowed to take it because it is a course not taught in our high schools. The inconsistencies between the two high schools and how they approach dual enrollment are concerning and another topic altogether. According to Jeff McNeil, HVS only had 2% of students participate in dual enrollment last year, while the state average is over 6.9%. I believe these low numbers are due to the district hiding this opportunity, and when students do find out about it, they are given the runaround, and their request to take eligible classes are then denied. I have read the board's policy 2271 on the Post-Secondary Dual Enrollment Options Program, and I see that on paper you support it. However, I am here tonight after numerous emails and meetings to tell you that it is not being followed. Furthermore, I have been completing the district's educational development plan every year since elementary school. The whole purpose of doing an EDP each year is for students to plan each year is for students to plan their future goals and create a plan in how to get there. In doing so, I've spent years researching my career pathway of becoming a veterinarian and would like to be allowed to take eligible college courses that will contribute to my future goals. Dr. Salah has stated that one of the district's goals is to do more for students at the top. Following the laws in the Post-Secondary Enrollment Options Act would be a good start. I ask the board to familiarize itself with the state laws on dual enrollment and ensure that students like myself are made aware of this opportunity when entering high school and are not being denied the opportunity to take eligible courses. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, now moving on to HVS parent, Richard.
Good afternoon. To answer the question when you first saw us when we walked in, we do have things to do, and that includes advocating for the children. I feel you let down. With that in mind, the board policies are, in my opinion, lacking clarity and transparency. If they did not, the events unfolding would not be taking place. There's been no accountability supported through HVS Board for the hiring of a monster, not one employee, that I have heard of, anyway. And that is a shameful truth that our residents need to be reminded of. A change needs to be made in policies for the future of HVS students. They need protection to ensure those who fail them are not given a second chance. As protectors of our children, school policies and procedures hired a predator. Where's the flaw? Who's responsible for hiring that monster? The policy does state, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but where's the integrity that the HVS Board should have shown, including holding that someone accountable? Where's a policy that should be followed? This is what is expected from those who are leading our children. You say safety and welfare remains at the top of your priority for our students. Why are the staff that are being held responsible for the Spring Mills tragedy still employed in our district? Listen to your community. Uphold your integrity. Remove those employees and renew your, the faith the community once held in you, each one of you board members. They voted you in. To the parents of HVS, I implore you to call, write, show up here at board meetings, speak your opinion. Remember, vote for what's best for our children when that time comes. It's only through collaboration and vigilance that we can uphold the standards and safety that we all expect and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Next is Erica Skalski.
Hi, HVS parent here. The Spring Mills monster was sentenced to 10 to 15 years in prison, six counts of CSC second degree. Our children, the victims of these heinous assaults, have a life sentence of fear. The horrible memory that they were let down by the very people that were there to protect them when their parents were not there. The pain and the memories will last a lifetime. There's something I would like to address. Dr. Salah had stated to the press how grateful he was that the parents and the students came forward. Why was that for the press? Was that to save face? Why weren't, why weren't the parents told that? Why is it that the press was told this, but not one of the victims or any of the parents were told this? Why has our pain, our tears, and our cries fallen on deaf ears with the board? Why hasn't one parent or one victim been told that you are grateful for them coming forward? Why haven't you acknowledged any of these families? I, for one, see these girls as heroes, brave, strong, wonderful heroes. One can only imagine how many victims there would have been if these seven-to-10-year-old girls did not come forward. I will acknowledge these families for you. To the victims and their families, thank you, one and all. Thank you for standing together to protect our children from further harm. Thank you for the, to the very brave, strong girls for coming forward and doing what so many adults failed to do at HVS. Thank you to all the parents for raising such wonderful, strong young girls. Thank you to my daughter. You're stronger and braver than I am, and we will work through this nightmare together.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment. We will move on to our regular agenda. First, the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please.
Yes, I'll move for the consent agenda as listed.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We'll do a vote, roll call, please. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Demick?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimowsky?
Yes.
Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, first, under unfinished business is athletic trainer services contract, Exhibit B.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We had this item on the agenda at our August meeting. We had a couple things as an administrative team to shore up and wanted to share that contract with the entire board. We did that within the span of that, that six weeks. So the, the board has had an opportunity to review the, the contract, ask any questions that might still be outstanding. I believe it's gone to now two Finance and Operations Committee meetings. I haven't had any questions. Have you had any follow-up questions that we need to talk through tonight, Mr. Van Goghtham?
No, I have not.
Okay. I don't know if there are any questions. If there are, you know, we're happy to, to take those questions now. Otherwise, we would ask for board support. We've, we've been working with these, these athletic trainers, sort of on an interim basis, if you will, just so we can make sure we take care of kids, and, you know, if we have an injury that we can, we can respond appropriately. We want to make sure if a, if a child gets hurt at one of our athletic events that we have the support for them. So this would memorialize that and make it more permanent.
All right. Thank you. So we'll take a motion, and then we can open discussion. So do we have a motion for the athletic trainer services contract? Motion from Mr. Wiseman. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Ms. Cotter, thank you very much. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Discussion?
Oh, discussion. Let's not just go ahead and vote. Let's talk about it, like we should. I promised it right before we did it. Discussion.
I just wanted to make a comment regarding it, and it's a very lengthy contract. It's well-done, and I think will serve Huron Valley well. Good job.
Thank you. Other comments? I appreciate you going back and, and answering a few questions and getting a little more detail on the contract, and it sounds like from Landon that they're already doing a nice job at Lakeland, so it's good to hear. Okay, I'm looking for more communication, anything, before I jump right through to voting? Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call. Thank you. Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Demick?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimowsky?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business. A, under new business is proposed superintendent goals. So Dr. Salah, take it away.
Thank you. If we could pull up the presentation. Okay, fantastic. So each year, as is customary, I present the Board of Education with proposed goals. The board provides me with any feedback that they might have. I make alterations to said goals, and then that's what this flowchart is here. So box two is where we're at this evening. You know, I, I propose goals, Board of Education reviews, and provides feedback either this evening or over the span of the next couple of weeks. I then work with each member of the COE team to establish their goals. COE establishes goals with department heads and/or principals, and then building administrators work towards their own goals and implementation of district-level goals and responsibilities. And in that way, from the board to the classroom, we have alignment in terms of our focus and our, our intention. So when you think about our goals, it's important to note that each of the five goals you'll see this evening are aligned with the, the Board of Education's adopted strategic plan, which was adopted in December of, of 2022. So these goals, everything you see, really aligns with the, the goals that were already adopted by the Board of Education. Goal one, I, I won't walk through this entire stair-step model, because you've heard me walk through it about a bajillion times, but you'll see here that the red box is highlighting step number four, which focuses us on MTSS. That will really drive our, our focus for the current school year. Our TLT department will be working with a district-wide team that focuses on a multi-tier system of support. So when students are not mastering the content, what are we doing to intervene? And when students are mastering the content, what are we doing to enrich? So as, as part of that continuation in the TLT goal lens is supporting our new assistant superintendent with some mentoring. She's doing a great job. She hardly needs any mentoring at all, but she will need some support as she works through that MTSS process amongst other items, and then supporting Mr. Kalmbach, our executive director of Student Support Services, in particular in the launching of our Student Support Services strategic plan, which will involve engaging multiple stakeholders and ultimately adopting a strategic plan by the close of the 2526 school year. So that is a goal number two, related to TLT, and then goal number, does that say four or three?
That's goal four.
No, it should say three.
Three is one word.
Oh, yeah. Well, you, you get the gist. Goal number three slash four, Dr. Salah will study, review, and make recommendations to the board for a district cell-wide cellphone policy. We've already started these discussions. I, frankly, this is sort of a carryover from our work last school year. You might recall, last year, we conducted a survey. We had almost 3,000 participants. Since that time, we've collected feedback from each of our buildings to determine what they are actually doing as it relates to the implementation of cellphone policies. Tomorrow, I am heading over to Harbor, because they are piloting a no-cellphone policy. I'm meeting with the staff tomorrow to get a sense of how they feel that is working for them. And then ultimately, we are already working on some draft policy recommendations that the board might consider, and you could say policy or administrative guidelines that the board might consider and review as it relates to a district-wide approach to cellphone policies. There's one thing that's clear, is that staff and parents feel very strongly that it would behoove us to have a district-wide approach to cellphone utilization in classrooms, especially during instructional time. So goal number four slash three, I thought I corrected that, my apologies, relates to our business and operations focus and continued focus on operational efficiencies and revenue enhancements that align with district needs. Action steps will include a focus on transportation data collection regarding ridership and investigation into two-tier busing efforts. Now, we know that two-tier busing is, is down the road somewhat when we have, when we're able to finish construction on this campus of a new middle school, but we believe that the cost savings will be quite significant once we're able to, to get to that point. We want to spend some time this year really studying that and giving the board sort of a snapshot of what we might expect in the future. Focus upon middle school design bidding and groundbreaking efforts at both the Bogey Lake and Watkins campus. We started the effort around middle school design last school year. You might recall, we had a committee with, you know, a variety of stakeholders, including community members, parents, staff, teachers, administrators, and students, who ultimately gave feedback and recommendations regarding what they felt our students needed at both White Lake Middle School as well as the new middle school. So a lot of those design efforts are underway. Our goal is to bid out the White Lake Middle School as early as November, and then bid out the new middle school by January, February timeframe, and then selling the first series of bonds for the 24-bond around February timeframe. So those are all goals related to the Bogey Lake and Watkins campuses, and then breaking ground as early as April at Bogey Lake, and then this summer at, at Watkins. And then I just mentioned the sale of bonds for the 2024 bond series. Jeffrey and I have been having a number of conversations around this topic. We think at this point, we will qualify for about $175 million in that first series, which is fantastic, because we need it for a lot of different work that is, that is needed and ongoing across the district. Goal number four, or five, or 4.12, I don't, I, I will correct this, I promise, and send it to you for the next board meeting. Huron Valley Schools will focus, will continue to focus upon school safety and security methods and systems designed to keep our students and staff safe and healthy. That, this includes in-person, we've done virtual Stop the Bleed training, but we are doing in-person Stop the Bleed training this current school year in, in partnership with Huron Valley Sinai Hospital, and then, of course, continued reinforcement with Run Height Fight procedures. So for a listening audience, we do Run Height Fight training every other year. We have a video training for those who onboard new in a specific year and aren't able to participate in the face-to-face training, and we are integrating in-person run, I'm sorry, in-person Stop the Bleed training. I'm fortunate to be able to sit on the Huron Valley Sinai Hospital board, and they have graciously offered to provide several trainers for us to do this training over two days. So we're looking forward to, to that here in the, in the near future. And then, goal number five is just a continued focus on social, emotional well-being. Huron Valley Schools will build upon its socially-emotional well-being and support of students through ongoing professional learning, and then continued focus and work of our positive behavior intervention support system across all grade levels within the Huron Valley Schools. We started this work last school year. We built teams at all, all of our buildings. We are explicitly teaching behavioral expectations, what that looks like in the hallway, what that looks like in the classroom, what that looks like on the school bus, what that looks like in the bathrooms, in, you know, a variety of contexts, and we are just continuing to focus on that work to get to implementation over the course of, of this school year. So that concludes my goals presentation. I'm happy to take any questions either this evening, or we can talk through those questions anytime between now and our next meeting, where I will ask for approval. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there questions now? Questions, comments?
Yes, a couple things. Number one, I appreciate the fact that even we had an opportunity to review some of these goals at, at our exec meeting, and some of the changes, some of the inputs that we gave you are already included. I think it really focuses also how important it is as it relates to consistency of leadership as it pertains to teaching, learning, technology, which is what we're all about, and how you're utilizing that stair-step model. Well, your goal number one shows that, you know, in this particular area, we're at the top of the, of the steps. We're also using that same model to talk about the, the cell phones, and, and we're, we're talking about culture and, and things such as that. So I appreciate that, and I think it's important to note that because we have that consistency of leadership, these goals build on each other, and it's extraordinarily important, because it really gives that framework for our, our boots in the field, some assurance that we're working towards the goals, and they're clearly defined. The other piece that I might suggest would be possibly under business and operations or school safety and security. You mentioned one of the things that are occurring at the at the state level is, are at-risk dollars available for safety and security, and the dollars that we've used over the last couple of years as it relates to providing a safe and secure environment. And there's a number of things that we're using to fund those items. We need to take a hard look at, how do we continue them? What are things that are working that maybe are working but are lower on the priority list? What are at the top of the priority list? And what might we be able to continue, which then really boils down to some hard choices. So I think a suggestion might be is to incorporate the continued looking at the budget and the impacts that the state and the federal government are making that are going to directly impact Huron Valley Schools. And we need to utilize the 25-26 school year as we move into the 26-27 budget, because I think there's going to be some radical change, some changes as it relates to funding and how that's going to impact and what we should continue and what we might go without. And I think that really goes across all of our committees.
So what I think I'm hearing you say, Mr. Wiseman, is a holistic view of the district budget as it relates to state and federal potential allocations, itemizing district programs, giving the board a sense of cost as it relates to the variety of programs that we offer, so that during perhaps a study session, we can go deeper amongst the eight of us and the code team to prioritize what we continue to fund should dollars from the state and/or the feds be cut.
Right, because there are certain things that we might be funding right now that are coming out of categoricals, and those are specifics. Those categoricals might go away, and they might have a direct impact now on general fund. And the question is, should we continue them or should we not? And if that's the case, dollars are finite, so we have to make some informed decisions. And that's one of our roles and responsibilities as a board. I don't want to get into micromanaging that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking at administration, your administrative team, to give us some recommendations and recognize what is being paid for out of a variety of buckets of money, and what are some decisions that we're going to be making. And we need to do that early on in 25-26 so that we can make those informed decisions and communicate and be transparent about it for 26-27.
I think that's prudent. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Other comments? All right. Well, you have until our next meeting to review these and send any questions. We will look to approve Dr. Sala's goals at the next meeting. And I'll just end with what I appreciate about these goals is their relation to and continuing to build upon the strategic plan. So we don't forget about that. So often, we spend all the time and energy to create a strategic plan, and it looks beautiful for a few months, and then it sits on a shelf until a few years later, we decide to do it again. But this really weaves together the idea of continuous improvement as it relates to that strategic plan. So thank you very much for helping to keep that alive for us as what, we're two, three years past strategic plan. So, but we still think about it every once in a while. So, all right. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to B, spring mills, emergency purchase, chiller compressor replacement. I don't know if we can do, if we're going to do B and C together and then vote on them separately. I don't know what you want to do there.
Yeah, so Mr. Van Goghtham will speak to B and C, and then the board would have to take two separate actions.
Yeah, so unfortunately, over the summertime, we had not only spring mills, but Oxbow's chiller compressors fail. And so, we talked about it a little bit in more detail on finance and operations. These actual chillers were purchased four and five years ago, so you think these are relatively, they are relatively new chillers. And so, we got into a discussion around Dyken, which is the company that makes the actual chiller, and the compressor is one piece of that. And so, our MNO team is going to take a deeper look at, you know, meeting with Dyken reps here in the next few weeks or within a month or so, and really get to, you know, what is this, why is this challenging? Because the shelf life on a chiller should be closer to 15 to 20 years. And when we have a compressor, which is a big component of it, now granted, these are a couple hundred thousand dollar units, but spending $40,000 to $50,000 to replace a compressor is something that we were not excited nor looking forward to. We're blessed that we have the dollars to support the purchase of these replacements, but we were out of warranty because that's a year to two for the parts on that. So, we are going to take a deeper dive because this is more than one unit. And as we come up, as Mr. Wiseman mentioned in our board notes and our committee notes, we do have a lot of purchases coming up, not only in new chillers, but we will replace old chillers. And then we have all of these individual room units that we'll be replacing at the elementary school that'll be really important. So we want to make sure we get this right. And so we're going to do some additional work around this, but we did have to purchase two compressors because one of the things we did not want to start at the beginning of school was having no air conditioning and spring mills in Oxbow. And as it turned out, the first few weeks of school we've had here have been relatively warm, and so they've used those chillers. And having that work done in late July and August was absolutely necessary for us to be successful at the opening day of school. So, happy to answer any questions. We're happy with the work that was done, and there will be some follow-up investigation that we'll continue to discuss at F and L.
Thank you, Mr. Van Goghtham. Ms. Pistana?
Do you want to do a motion before I ask my question?
Yes, I don't know. I think that's what we're supposed to do. I think that's the rules. All right. So, we're going to do a motion for B, and then we'll see if we have additional questions when we do a motion for C. So, may I please have a motion for the spring mills, emergency procedure, chiller compressor replacement?
I'd like to make that motion, that we approve the emergency purchase of the chiller compressor replacement at spring mills.
Thank you very much. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you very much. Now, let's discuss. Ms. Pistana?
So, a couple of questions. Are these chillers, when we did the construction in these elementary buildings, these were brand-new? So they've only, we've only had them for, what, five years, four years?
Yeah, so they're four and five years old.
Four and five years old. And you said you think the shelf life should be 15 to 20 for these?
Correct.
Okay. But that's what you're going to investigate, right?
Yeah, so the compressor is one component of the big overall chiller, but it's an important piece, and the fact that we had two of them from the same manufacturer go out in a short period of time gives us pause. We didn't buy anything new in that period since we've replaced these, but we're going to take a long, hard look at having this conversation with the manufacturer, because as we ask the board to approve even larger dollar amounts for a brand-new middle school and a major renovation at White Lake, basically redefining that building, there will be this type of purchase at those spaces. And quite honestly, we don't want to get that wrong. So, we need to do some homework. We're disappointed that these are in this position, but we're not going to rest on, oh, well, it happened. We're going to investigate, and then we're going to follow up, whether it be the finance and operations committee at a minimum, and then the executive committee, or whatever committee wants to hear about it.
Jeffrey, what's the warranty again for the board?
Like, one to two years.
It was a two-year warranty, if I remember correctly. So, it'd been two years on a warranty, which is incredible.
I would just ask that, yeah, you let all of us know, because I'm not on finance or exec. Then, the only question I didn't understand, so B, it says emergency purchase, compressor replacement, and then there's a two. Does that mean there's two of them there, but there's only one at Oxbow? Why is there, why is the two next to the replacement? Any idea?
So, was the...
Because it's in the three boxes or two.
It's my understanding, there's two compressors that work simultaneously.
Yeah.
They kick on and kick off. So, at each building at Oxbow and at...
Spring Mills.
Spring Mills. There's two compressors for that $40,000 or $45,000.
But Oxbow doesn't have a two in parentheses. I'm just asking. That was my question.
But there is two. That total price of $40,000 and $45,000 is for two compressors, correct?
So, there's two compressors in each chiller. There's compressor one and compressor two. And spring mills, there was actually compressor two in that whole big unit, and Oxbow was just compressor one. So, they called it two not because there's two of them, because there's two units in it.
It's number two.
Yes.
Okay, okay. That was just my question, because I thought, well, is there two? Okay. That's my question.
Good question. Other questions? Yes, Ms. Crumholtz?
So, we did a lot of work on all of our elementary schools. Do we have more of these units in our elementary schools? So, could we potentially have another $40,000 here, $40,000 there?
So, out of the eight elementaries, we had, I believe, three or four chillers. We didn't have, all eight didn't get replaced because we had purchased some chillers at the beginning of our bond program, you know. We have some that are still in use, so there's potential for another one or two. That's why we want to have Dyken out to take a look at it, because that's what we don't want to come back to you for.
Yeah, especially, this is a manufacturer defect. I'm hopeful that it's that, and we can recoup these dollars, because even though we have them, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, we will try. We will try for sure.
All right. Other questions? Good questions. Okay, so with that, we're going to go ahead and take a vote on the spring mills purchase. And after that, we'll then do a motion and whatnot for the Oxbow. So, let's start with spring mills. We'll do a roll call.
A point of clarification, both of these are already in place.
Yes.
They were done under board policy, emergency purchases that were approved by the superintendent. But this is a follow-up back to the school board.
Yes. Board policy says that with emergency purchases, we will bring emergency purchases to the board.
Right. But as chair for the finance and operations, it's important for the rest of the board to know that we had a very thorough conversation, Lindsay and Jacob and myself, with Jeffrey as related to this, and brought up some of the concerns that you expressed, Denise. And really, being in a situation, Amy, where we don't want this to be occurring on the other chillers, at the same time, it's important to bring the manufacturer in, to have those discussions, to find out what's going on with those chillers, because that component, the compressors, should last longer than what they did. And they are out of warranty, but it raises some real concerns, not only with the existing chillers, but as we move forward with the dollars that have been provided through the passage of the bond issue, do we want the same chillers and the same manufacturer?
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. I did see Mr. Dimick's hand go up for a hot second. Still a question?
I was debating on asking, what would happen if the board votes no after the chillers were already installed and money was spent?
Yeah, good question.
That's a great question, Mr. Dimick. And when the board was adopting policy, I actually asked that question, because I thought it was a little unusual. But it's more of an acknowledgement, was how it was explained to me. It's more of an acknowledgement that, yes, we recognize there was an emergency purchase that was needed. It couldn't wait. Superintendent needed to take action. With emergency purchases, I typically contact the board president. I let them know. If there's a significant concern or objection, it'll be shared with me at that point. But given the inability to have school without the chillers, it made sense to move forward with the purchase. But yes, that's an excellent question. And I asked the same question when the board adopted that policy.
All right. Good question. Other questions? Other points of information? All right. Well, then let's go ahead and take a vote. All right. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimkowski?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Moving on to C, Oxbow Elementary Emergency Purchase Chiller Compressor Replacement. Do we have a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve the...
Purchase as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Dimick, do we have support?
Support.
Support from Cotter. All right. Do we have any discussion? No? All right. I think we covered it just a second ago. All right, let's go and take a vote. Mr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimkowski?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you very much. You can keep your chillers, I guess, because I don't know. Compressors, there we go. Keep them running. Next, moving down to our only item other than the superintendent goals that we're not voting on tonight, but a presentation about EduClimer, Exhibit F.
And Dr. Nemeth will be presenting this item.
This will be her first presentation in her new...
Don't heckle her too much.
We'll be kind.
I haven't gotten to that part of the mentoring dialogue yet.
All right. I just wanted to point out that...
Mentoring by board. Here's how you handle it.
This is the first time that she's done a report with her new title, so I don't want to make her any more nervous than she already is.
Actually, now I feel more comfortable, so thank you. Good evening. This is a tool that I wanted to share with the full board. We have been discussing the EduClimer tool in the TLT smaller subcommittee over the last couple of months, and it's a tool that is, we're proposing from TLT as an additional data system to support our MTSS work as well as our EduClimer, or sorry, our early warning system work. So, what is EduClimer? It is a, it's part of our Renaissance suite of tools. We already work with Renaissance right now with our data warehouse. We call illuminate DNA. So, Renaissance EduClimer is another additional piece to that product, and it's a data visualization and student data management platform designed for K-12 schools and districts. It helps educators collect, analyze, and act on a wide range of student data to support academic growth, behavioral development, and overall student success. So, it's a big mouthful. But essentially, this is going to help us to visualize and act on student data from multiple sources, and I'm going to walk through some of that for you. Who is this for? You can see from this list here, this is really going to impact a lot of our staff, primarily teachers, school psychologists, social workers, behavior specialists and coordinators, lots of our school teams that work on intervention with students or working on supports for students, like our BitBest IEP teams, student support teams, interventionists. We have data coaches, and then we have instructional coaches, all of our building principals and district leaders, and really any team that's supporting student success and trying to impact some interventions for students. So, you get to see the stair-step climber again. This is here because, as Dr. Sala said in his goals, that last fourth stair step is really very important to this work, and this tool is going to support that work. So that's why we are very excited and anxious to use it, because in order to really intervene, we have to track data. In order to really measure how students are doing, we need to see that data, and we need to be able to see it efficiently. We have all the data. We already have it. We just have it in multiple systems, and we're looking to make that streamlined, and so that it's easier, it's quicker, and it gets to the real conversation about how are we going to support students. So, this is a diagram or a picture of the multi-tiered system approach. It's very, so the green there, it's for all, the whole class research core instruction, that would be for everyone. The yellow is representing students who may need some extra support or some tools to help increase their learning in certain areas. And then, the top of that triangle would be more intensive support. So again, we already have this in place, but this tool will help us to kind of target and measure where students are, because students can fall within this triangle, and they can rotate throughout the triangle. So, we have the multi-tiered system support, and this is also written in the law that we have a system. So, we're looking at the EduClimer tool to help us gather that data and implement some of these tools and interact them. Another big piece is early warning. So, in order to identify where students are within an MTSS system, we need to look at some supports, and that could be a variety of supports. It's not always academics. It's not always student grades or test scores that indicate that we need some targeted intervention. Sometimes we know attendance is a big factor, students who are not coming to school regularly, or they have poor attendance, or maybe it's behavior. So, to be able to figure out who these kids are quickly and be able to look at multiple data sources to identify them is part of the early warning components and part of what EduClimer will help to identify. This is the state of Michigan's seven-step process in order to develop that early warning system, otherwise known as E-WIMS. And as you can see where the arrows are pointing in this diagram, that's where the data really intersects. So, using that early warning system data tool, we need to have one. We currently have, again, we have the data, we just have it in different places. So, we can go to Skyward, and we can look at attendance. We can look at a grade book, and we can find out how students' grades are. We can look at our illuminate DNA system and find out how they're doing with their test scores. We can pull in behavior supports from how the buildings are pulling that data, but we don't have a place that kind of pulls all of this together in one location and looks at the whole child. So, this system or this process... So, this, this system or this process would allow us to review that data quickly, to assign interventions where they're needed, whether it's in academic support or behavior or maybe in attendance, or maybe all three, and then monitor that over time. So, when we add these two things together, the MTSS system as well as our early warning system, that's where EduClimber really can make the greatest impact. So, the why behind it is it's a central platform for academic behavior and attendance data. It's also going to provide that early warning indicator to address individual needs. And it's going to give leaders, all kinds of leaders, instructional leaders, teacher leaders, teachers, principals, a single view of student progress and that whole child view. It will eliminate data silos. It will take a lot of the work that so many people are doing across the district collecting this data, dumping it sometimes into an Excel document to figure out where those intersections are. This is going to do that for them, which will allow them to talk more about the students and not pull that data. And it will strengthen MTSS implementation. So, I know you can't see the picture very well there, the, the diagram, but if you look at the bigger screen in the back, that's a, a student picture, an individual child. And all of that data you see on the right is their attendance, it's their test scores, it's their interventions that have been happening. It's all of the data that could be collected on that one child. So, when the teams are meeting, instead of pulling up pieces of paper and having all of the staff running around trying to gather all this, it's all in one place. And they can see it on a dashboard or a screen like that. That's the really power behind EduClimber. If we are to move forward with this, there is a, a very lengthy onboarding process. And, and one of the things that we really like about this tool compared to others is they customize it for the district. So, we will have our teams. This will be something we would work through the MTSS team to do together to build this system to meet our needs. So, that means that, like, as an example, when we talk about an early warning system and we're looking at attendance data, how, how many days absence, absent would be considered something that we would say is a, an early warning trigger for a student that may be in, in trouble? What are the test scores or grade thresholds that we want to consider? All of those areas. How many behavior incidents have they had? So, we would develop that along with forms and that dashboard that you saw a sneak peek of just to make sure that that's fitting the needs of the district and the buildings and what we're looking at with our MTSS system. This, again, is the integration of data sources. This diagram shows Renaissance EduClimber in the middle and then lots of different pieces of data that we'll be funneling into it. Grade book, attendance, behavior, progress monitoring, school, college and career readiness, SEL screeners. Amy, I know you've called this the hub sometimes. And this picture kind of illustrates that kind of visual when you call it the hub because it kind of is like a hub and it's pulling a lot of things into one place, which makes it a lot easier to look at and, and look at it over the whole child. The onboarding phases, again, are, there's multiple phases with lots of professional development support. The first, the first fee, I guess, that we would pay in order to work with this tool would be all professional learning and design, which is nice because it's not just a, a plug and play where they hand it over and then we have to figure it out. We actually work with the, with the company to develop how we want this to look and how we want this to work in the district. So, that's going to be an ongoing process for about three months. Also, it's, just wanted to let you know that this is not a new tool. It's being used right now across the state of Michigan. We have, like, already been using Renaissance with the illuminate tool. So, this, again, would be the same login that our staff is used to. They would just have a lot more tools now in the tool well to, to work with. It's a three more, three-month onboarding process, lots of professional learning, customized and system development. And I just wanted to mention that Jillian Johnson, who is our new data and assessment coordinator for the district, she would be supporting a lot of this training. And she actually has been with Huron Valley for two years, but she comes from Oxford where she used this tool and has a lot of experience with it and speaks very highly of it. So, you can see the list of districts across Michigan who are already using the tool, have a lot of positive things to say. I did reach out to many of them just to get some anecdotal feedback and everybody's very positive. The Oakland County districts are highlighted there as well. So, in closing, anticipated return on investment, this is really to increase efficiency and reduce the amount of time that we're spending pulling data manually, gathering it, and really supporting our MTSS teams to have the time to actually discuss student interventions, track interventions, monitor students and support them, not collecting multiple pieces of information and trying to create what EduClimber can do pretty, pretty quickly. It will enhance the early identification and support for at-risk students. It will pull together, again, all of those things that we indicate as our early warning symptoms and, and share that information quickly. And it will, will improve the district's ability to track student growth and evaluate the effectiveness of our intervention strategies. We will be looking at what we're doing and making sure that what we're doing for kids is actually working so that we can quickly change that if it's not, and we can continue it if it is. So, that is the overview of that tool. If there are any questions or comments?
We'll start with Ms. Ryan with a question.
It looks really cool. How does all the information, how does all that data get into the software if we have it in multiple locations? Do they all talk to each other?
They do. So, we'll have some integration with Skyward primarily. So, there will be some data upload. Sometimes it'll be a manual import upload. A lot of it will be connected, talking to each other. We already have that right now with illuminate DNA, which is our, where we house all of our assessment data. So, we pull that in from Skyward and with through the data hub, the Michigan data hub, with these, we have these relationships where if the tools are talking to each other, they kind of do that behind the scenes. If it's, if it's something like, maybe it's a common assessment at the building or it's something that the teachers are collecting in the building, we will do a manual upload. So, it'll be like a pulling it out of a CSV file and uploading it into the tool. And there's a lot to, to learn, I think, for us around that. I want to just go back to that piece right there because some of these integrations are going to be easy, I would say, just kind of an import system. And then some of them might take a little bit more on technical backend. So, we'll have on our team technical people as well. But for the most part, we have been assured by Renaissance and the districts who are using it that they can do pretty much any integration. They just might take a little bit more time or have a different approach. But getting the data in is, there's a lot of flexibility.
Will any of the old systems or go away?
No.
Or nothing is leaving? We're just bringing this on as an additional support to what we currently have?
Exactly.
To take everything like that, everything out into one thing? Okay.
It's not subs, yeah, sorry. It's not substituting anything. It's just going to add into the, the Renaissance DNA component. So, there will be more of that visualization, but it won't be anything that we're removing.
I was hoping we would so we could save some money. Yep, that looks like all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Dimick?
I don't really have a question. I'm looking at the cost of it. Is this, so it's, this is like a hundred, I'm scrolling back up, a hundred and thirty-something thousand for three years, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five every three years, and obviously inflation. So, we could expect the next time it comes around, unless they sell us a new product, that we would pay more. But what really bugs me is the, the training guy. The six hours, they want thirty-seven fifty or something like that roughly per, per person. So, it's like six hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for these people to come out to the building to train for one day. Is that correct, essentially?
It's somewhat of training. It's, a lot of it is customization. So, I think with that six hours, it's going to be working with the company to determine how to set up some of these reports. So, it's not just like a technical training, so to speak. It, it would be a meeting with a lot of our team to design how this is going to look. But yes, you're correct. That's for the PL, the professional learning.
Yeah, that's pretty good pay. If they can pull that gig off, good for them, I guess.
I, I will add that we are anticipating that we will have funding through Title II to support that first twenty-two thousand dollar payment, which is all professional learning. So, we are looking into that right now. We don't have, because of the budget, we don't have our final approval on that. But we're, we're expecting that a big part of that, or if not all of that fee will be covered through Title II, not general fund.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Grzemkowski?
I, I think this is fascinating. I love data and I, I like how that you could take a look and a snapshot of a, a student. And am I correct in thinking that once this is in place, that if, let's say a teacher wants to go and look at historical data, can they query this and ask, you know, can we see what the math has been in this specific thing? Will it give them that kind of information? Will it be that granular? Or is it going to be more fixed where these are the reports that you can get, but really it's only going to be these twenty-five reports? Or will you be able to be, will you be able to customize it at that level for each student so that a, a teacher can go back and say, okay, well we can see where maybe the break was or where something didn't quite make sense to someone? Maybe that, this is where they kind of got off track. Is that possible?
Yeah, that is the plan. And it is, all of the data in Renaissance follows the student, which is a good thing. So, any teacher, staff member who has access to see students in whatever their realm is, they will see the data. And it is historical. It goes back in time. We have experience with DNA right now, so EduClimber will follow in line with the way that that tool works, which you can roll back in time. So, you can change the date and then look at historical data. They also have a, a nice component of forms, which is part of that customization piece where, you know, things like IRPs or individualized reading plans, you can design that right into this tool. So, those are things that, again, are customizable. So, if you were looking at a specific maybe teacher or building goal for a student, that is possible. The details of that, we'll have to learn. We haven't used it yet, but they, there's a lot of capability and a, a lot of flexibility, I would say, in how this can be used, which is why we're, we're really hoping to bridge beyond where we are. Because right now, kind of what you're describing is a little bit what we have. We have that ability to see all of the data, but pulling it into one report is taking a lot of time. And it's, it's turning out to look like a spreadsheet, which is not fun to look at. We'd rather look at the, the bars and the graphs and the colors. It's a, it's a lot more visually appealing and shows a lot better story of the student rather than just the numbers.
Thank you. Mr. Wiseman, you had your hand up for a minute?
Nope, questions have been answered.
Oh, there we go. Okay, other questions?
I, I do want to point out, looking at the numbers, I quicked it a little whisper over here. So, we didn't replace you. You were promoted and your position has not been replaced.
Right.
And I think this, and you were hired specifically to help us with data. So, I don't want to call this the new you, but it certainly will, is, there was money there for an employee. This money is, is sort of now being spent on something to allow us to do something in a more efficient and effective way. So, just wanted to, to point that out when we're talking about money in dollars and cents. We talked about, is this replacing a system? No, it really is almost replacing a, a human-ish, you know, not a hundred percent. You did a lot more than this.
I feel like I'm being heckled now.
No, no, no. But this is, you know, this is certainly something to help us. We've gotten a lot better with data. And what's the point giving all of these assessments and collecting all of this data if we're not using it? And so, I think this is really, uh, really will give us a, a bonus. And I know you want to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, a couple other things. Thank you, Dr. Nemeth. It was excellent. I'm sure there will be more questions. So, don't leave yet. Two things that I think as an organization that we've struggled with. One is absenteeism. Since COVID, we have really struggled with daily average attendance. Last year, we made a significant effort and a push, and I see Anna there nodding, because we made an effort, you know, amongst our, our mental health supports to try and I, I die, identify and really understand why, why kiddos were absent. And it was a difficult to track the behavior data, the absenteeism data, the student achievement data. And having it all in one place, this will help us and aligns with some of the best practices and recommendations that the Michigan Department of Education has been pushing with early warning intervention systems. This helps us contextualize to the individual student. And then the second thing, you know, the stair step model, the first stair step, people is, you know, culture, climate, people, systems. It's the way we do things around here. And the third stair step is the way with which we use data to help us make decisions about teaching and learning. At the beginning of the school year when we had our opening day, we, we really dug into some of the data. And what we recognized is that we have to drill down by building, by student, that falls in that low-growth, low-proficient quadrant. And we have to have a plan for each of those individual students. When you have multiple data points in different places, and the amount of time it takes to aggregate that and look at it in one place and tell you that one picture to help solve absenteeism and really tailor make, you know, instructional decisions for kids can be, can be cumbersome and difficult. This will help us with that PLC work and the collaborative inquiry work that, that we do. And then I guess the final thought here is, yes, we did make some, some structural changes. I mean, when we promoted Lena, she had, she brought a certain skill set with her, you know, different than the skill set that John had. So, we did not, we did not replace her position. And that allowed us to do some restructuring and save, you know, quite a bit of, of, of general fund money. The, the thing that's great about, you know, resources like this is oftentimes we can use grant dollars to, to pay for. And sometimes we don't know until the next budget cycle what the grant dollars are going to be. But as Lena mentioned, I'm fairly certain we'll have some Title II monies that we'll be able to use to pay for that first installment of, of this, of this product. And I wouldn't be at all surprised if we're able to support it in future years with, with grant dollars as well.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Does it have an AI component?
You know, I, I, probably.
I'm just thinking.
I don't know the answer to that.
That's a great question.
I'm assuming there's some AI built into it because it seems like everything does at this point.
Yeah.
But that's a great question and we can look into that more. But with the forms in partic, in particular, I would, I would guess that there's some AI development going on.
And I have a follow-up question for that, too, is has our IT department looked at this in the world of cybersecurity and, and hacks? Having a system that brings everything together sounds great, but it also makes me nervous that everything's coming together and can it all just be ruined in one place? So, I want to make sure that at some point our IT departments looked through this and said, yeah, they have proper security, you know, as much as we can possibly have to keep our student and, uh, uh, test scores and all that sort of stuff safe as much as possible.
Absolutely. Which that, sorry, we're like bouncing back and forth.
Bouncing back and forth, yep.
Which that, we just bought some stuff at work. That's why I'm getting all these thoughts in my head. We, what do they do with the data? They can't use it for their good, like all this student data. Because that was something we just had to look at with the software we purchased, that they were going to be able to use our information to sell their company to other places.
No, yeah, that's not, there's a, there's an agreement, a data sharing agreement, but it will go to the hub and back to Huron Valley. And it doesn't go to any private company. Student data will not. So, we would make sure all of that was validated and signed and part of the contracts for sure because the intention is this is all contained. And it, it, we already have it. Just to, to reiterate that, we already have all of these data pieces. It's just that they're not talking to each other in one place. So, we, it would be more pulling it out of one system, putting it in another. And that would flow mostly through either our IT department or it will flow through the data hub, both of which would be secure. So, but again, great question and, and something to make sure that we're keeping our eye on in, in those contracts to ensure that safety and security. And I would just add to, to Laura, to your comments about just the efficiency piece. I, I really do think the amount of time that I did spend doing this in my previous role and the amount of time that Jillian and our data coaches, which are in each building now, are spending doing this kind of work, it really will save time and I think will pay us back in terms of the cost that it will be for us because we will be saving that in, in staff dollars and time, which is a huge resource.
All right, thank you very much. I think we've exhausted all of our public questions at this point. Obviously, we have a few weeks to send questions to Lena if we have them. So, she's able to answer more of what we have and, of course, look into a little, a few of the things that we talked about related to the contract. But thank you, Lena.
Yes, you're welcome.
This is really excellent. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're getting close. I think we're going to EFNG, which are contracts to approve. I imagine, as we have, we'll probably discuss them as a group, but then vote on them independently. Yes? Okay. And we'll put it over to Ms. Wanger.
Go ahead, Jen.
All right, great. These are the last three remaining contracts as a result of all of our negotiations this summer. As mentioned earlier, the tentative agreements were reviewed at Executive Committee FNO and also included in the board packet. All contracts were negotiated within board parameters. So, it just says grouping that together. The first one is our HVSSP. That is our transportation group. So, bus drivers, bus attendants. And that, we reached the tentative agreement this summer, July 16th, after completing our negotiations. It was ratified by their group on September 4th. It is a three-year contract. It is one of the two that we negotiated three-year contracts with. So, we are asking approval for the HVSSP collective bargaining agreement through June 30th of 2028.
All right, shall we chat about this one and then vote? Good? Yes? Yeah?
All right, shall we chat about this one and then vote? Good? Yes? Yeah. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the HVSSP contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the HVSSP contract as indicated in.
Thank you, Mr. Dimick. Do we have support?
Sure, I'll support.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Um, any, any discussion? I congratulate you for getting three years. So we do have a little staggering in our negotiations. So it's not just negotiation marathon every two years. We can put a few in in three years. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's move on to the HVFMT contract.
All right. Now this is a handbook group. So this is our cafe managers, our foreman, technology, communications, our business office accountants. So they are handbook group and we reached a tentative agreement with them on August seventh. It is a two-year contract and we are asking approval of the HVFMT agreement through June thirtieth of 2027.
All right, wonderful. Uh, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the HVFMT contract as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Grisimskowski. Do we have support?
I'll support that.
All right, thank you. Cot, Ms. Cotter, do we have discussion? Mr. Wiseman.
Yes, I just want to point out and congratulate our negotiating team with the agreement because I think it's important. We're, we're a, a business of learning and we recognize that in this group, there's increases in certifications. And I think it's extraordinarily important for these individuals to be certified, to provide greater services, greater knowledge, to keep our buildings going and to make certain that we have a, an environment that is instructionally sound and, and available. So I congratulate the fact that we recognize that within this group and the importance of certifications.
You beat me to it, Mr. Wiseman. Thank you. Other discussion? All right, let's take a vote. Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Uh, Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, HVAA contract.
Last but not least, so this is our administrator group. This is another handbook group. Also a two-year settlement that we reached this summer and we are requesting approval of the HVAA through June thirtieth of 2027.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion?
Sure. I move the Board of Education approve the HVAA contract as presented.
Thank you very much. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Ms. Grisimskowski. Uh, and discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote. Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you very much. I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Salah before we move on to Good and Welfare.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make a, a quick comment for the board and for our listening audience. I wanted to thank Leila, Lola. I thought it was, oh, okay, Lola. I thought she said Leila, my bad. I want to thank her for her comments regarding dual enrollment. I, I just want the board to know that we have had conversations with Lola and with her father specifically related to dual enrollment. We have heard their concerns and Mr. Lindberg has been working with them regarding their questions. Our dual enrollment, uh, policy and procedure is actually communicated when the, uh, when the course catalog goes out every year. So it's a part of, of that. If that needs to be clear, certainly we can, we can look to, to tweak that somewhat. But that's the process that we've always used. Not that we should always use it that way, but that is how we have communicated dual enrollment. And then, uh, there are courses that she mentioned where the standards are actually embedded with courses that we offer. And so therein lies the, the question of why isn't this class approved for dual enrollment? Well, because trigonometry is embedded within calculus, which we do offer. So we wouldn't approve paying for tuition to attend a different school when we offer the course. So therein lies the, the question on, on some of these pieces. So I just want the board to know that there have been conversations with, with family. I have not personally spoken with Lola or her father, but I would ask Dr. Nemeth to just follow up with family. And if there are any outstanding questions, we can answer those questions and then maybe a board note. Just sort of summarizing the conversation, the questions that we heard from Lola today and, and some very clear responses and, uh, next steps. So if, if we are going to send a separate letter from the course catalog, let's reference that in board notes. So the board has a clear idea regarding, uh, next steps and then we can communicate that with the family as well. Okay? Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Moving on to Good and Welfare. Do we have Good and Welfare? Ms. Cotter.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with the board that last Monday, I went to Lakeland High School and I attended their career path program. It was set up through our CTE program. Kay Summer did a wonderful job. I was amazed when I walked into the gym, almost every college program was sitting at a table and had information available for the students. But what I was most impressed with is there are institutions there or higher ed that provide training in the trades for our kids. Likewise, we had some of our local trades that were there presenting. I talked with one fellow, he's in a, I forget what it's called, some kind of a plumbing thing, but he's a Lakeland High School graduate. It was just really nice to see all the opportunities in one room that were available to our kids. Likewise, they even had, um, financial aid programs that were available for school. And our military was there also. So it was a wonderful evening. It was well done, well developed. And I enjoyed talking with a number of people. It was a great program.
Very nice. Thank you. Other Good and Welfare? Yes, Ms. Mr., oh, Ms., yeah.
I attended District Parent Council this morning. It was very well attended. We had people in the room as well as people online. And we had good discussion, good discussion about a lot of things going on in the district. It was a really open, honest conversation and that's what we look for at DPC.
All right, thanks, Ms. Ryan. Or Ms. Pastana, Ms. Ryan.
Yeah, I was, I kind of wrote this down earlier, so I wouldn't get emotional. But we remember Charlie Kirk for his passion, conviction and dedication to engaging young minds. His voice sparked dialogue and inspired many to think critically and speak boldly. And I wanted to let everyone know that both Lakeland and Milford have a Turning Point USA chapter. I don't know what the tag is for Lakeland, but Milford Instagram is at Club America underscore Milford HS. There's a Google Doc within that that they can fill out and become members or however that works with the clubs. Thanks.
Thanks, Michelle. Other Good and Welfare?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate Landon being here tonight representing Lakeland. And I just want to underscore that this is a big week at, at Lakeland. Milford and Lakeland both really enjoy having homecoming week. Lakeland's homecoming is this week. Uh, they talk about the, the game, but I'm going to focus on the parade. I think it's something that they instituted about three years ago. Uh, one of the advantages of having a campus, uh, they were able to have, they, they started that tradition now. Unlike Milford where they have the homecoming parade through downtown Milford, obviously that we don't have, there's not a downtown for Lakeland to do. But they do that now and it starts at Lakewood, goes through the, the campus and it's well attended. So if you have an opportunity, please attend. At the same time, a little bit of shout out, Lisa Sutton, who's a very active parent over at Lakeland. I think she's one of the people that are somewhat in charge of this. And I've gotten to know Lisa because Lakeland's borrowed my car for the last couple of years. Many of you know that I have a convertible and I, convertibles are, are somewhat, uh, something that they like at parades. And Lisa sent me a note that the parade starts at five thirteen, uh, at five thirty at Lake, at Lakeland, starts over at Lakewood. That they're looking for more convertibles. Her note is, we need one more convertible to get all of our senior class homecoming court in a convertible. And we also have a McDonald's Grimace mascot in need of a fancy ride through the parade. So that there's a need to have two convertibles. But this is how Lisa operates. If we could get five more convertibles, we'd get all of our underclassmen, court members in a convertible too. If you know of anyone else who may be willing or able to participate, please let me know right away. All right? So I'm letting everybody know. Okay? And, and if you do have a convertible that you would like to drive in that parade, contact Lakeland High School and they'll, they'll get you in touch with Lisa and I'm sure she'll reach out to you right away. So that's my stick.
All right. Be bold, I suppose. That's what we've learned from that one. All right. Thank you very much. Other Good and Welfare? Yes, Amy.
Can I just thank our history teachers? Um, the week of nine eleven, a lot happened. Many of us learned about a stabbing on a train. We had another school shooting. We had the assassination of Charlie Kirk. And we had the twenty-fourth anniversary of nine eleven. And my daughter, we might have done this in the car. No, don't tell anybody. But she interviewed me and said, what, what do you remember about nine eleven? And it brought to mind so many things, but it dawned on me that the shooter in Colorado and the shooter in Utah and my daughter have no real connection with nine eleven. It was before their time. They have no connection. And I appreciate the fact that our history teachers realize that. And they brought, um, and they asked their students to talk, which is a very important thing right now, to talk to those that experienced it. And one of the things she, one of the questions, she said to me, how did it change you? And I thought, wow, how did it change me? Um, and I thought, you know, I was more connected to my fellow man. I, I prayed more. I, I gave blood. I did all the things. If I'm honest, I probably was a little more patriotic. I listened to people. And after that week, I thought to myself, I know where I was when the world stopped turning. But do I remember who I was when the world stopped turning? And I, am I advocating? Am I being that person? And am I teaching that to my children? And so as I, I appreciate the fact that our history teachers are not just saying, well, this is recent history. Twenty-four years is not that long. Trust me, I know. I'm, I'm, you know, thirty-five. Stop laughing, Tom. But it's, it's twenty-four years ago is not that long. And yet for our students, it's a whole generation. As we look forward, I hope that we remember as adults who we were when the world stopped turning and, and how we responded so that we can teach that to our children. And I appreciate our history teachers who recognize that those conversations aren't just something that you bring up at the dining room table. They need to be prompted. They need to be explored. And I was able to do that with my daughter on nine eleven, or yes, it was the morning of nine eleven because she waited to do that project. But it was something that we could explore and we could have a conversation about. But it also made me look at myself and say, what am I doing that I, what am I not doing that I was doing before? And hopefully to bring to mind and remind me that, um, I need to be focused on, on unity, but I also need to be focused on dialogue and having conversations not only with my children, but with my friends and with people who are not yet my friend. So Good and Welfare, thank you, history teachers for bringing it home once again.
I don't know that we've shouted out history teachers lately, so that was helpful and, and timely. Thank you. Um, other comments?